Welcome back to the Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education where we're convening to open session. We have nothing to report out from action taken in closed section. And let us go, since we have no actions to take, let's go to our mission statement. Let's go to trustee Raymond. And for everyone in the house, before she says this mission statement, I want everyone to understand that it is linked to our strategic directions up here. You can check it out on our website, come read it during the recess and understand what the values of this district are all about.
Okay, we work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all of our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. Now I'm going to provide some instructions about public comment for everyone here. You are at a meeting of our public meeting of this working board. And you are always invited to make public comments and we actually respect and encourage that those public comments on matters of the board agenda and within our jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak blue form and it's located on the back table. Or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment. And submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president. Speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comments allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allotted. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the public, the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, this board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. And again, we are glad when people make comments. We are going to listen to your comments. We cannot engage in your comments and we ask that you respect that by not engaging us once you've completed your comments. So let us go to our next agenda item, school report and recognitions. I would like to welcome Mr. Jeff Keller, principal of Proctor Elementary School.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank superintendent Amadi, the board of trustees, Proctor teachers and staff for being here to support. For the opportunity to highlight some of the work that Proctor has been engaged in. So as everyone knows, professional learning communities has been one of Castro Valley Unified's key district initiatives. At Proctor, we have, here are 23, 24 goals. Staff and parents contributed to the development of our goals. It was done. Staff helped. It went through school site council, ELAC, leadership. And what we wanted is we wanted the goals to be understood, clearly understood and for there to be a very clear focus on the goals and also the plan for achieving the goals. And we also, our plan was, part of our plan is that PLCs is a key initiative for actually leveraging not only our school goals, but our district goals and initiatives. And this, again, this work went through school site council, ELAC, leadership and the entire staff. This document here was created by our school site council to make something on, you know, our plan and the system document tracker is over 70 pages. No one's going to read that. So we wanted our community, our staff and everyone to know what are our goals, where are we and what are we doing to achieve those goals? So this is posted around our school. And will be shared at various meetings throughout the school year. So PLCs, because it's been such a key district strategy and because it is one of the highest leverage strategies for improving student learning outcomes. We actually took a team of 16 teachers to a PLC institute over the summer. So teachers gave up part of their summer to go and learn more about PLCs. And we did this, and this is also up there to build capacity. Teacher teams were provided with time and ongoing support in order to collaborate in the most effective way possible. And then I'm going to invite, there'll be three teachers who will come up and they're basically in brief, just they're going to talk about what did they learn at the conference? And how has that changed how they work together? Let's just start with whoever wants to come up.
Hi, good evening.
We have you, yeah, use the mic. You can walk around with the mic.
Oh, just feels really like separated.
Yeah.
It's because it were recorded.
Yeah.
Got it. Here we go. Is this, is this? Yeah, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Eckloff, and I've been teaching at Proctor in first grade for 17 years. And I was thinking about, when I was asked to speak about the RTI process, I really realized that it did not start there. It didn't start at the RTI process. It really, our transformation began with our leadership. So for the past two years, we have been privileged to work with a principal that has a clear vision and educational philosophy. And he communicates his priorities to us through his actions and his words. He leverages high impact practices at our school and builds, puts his efforts and resources behind those philosophies. And he supports and respects us professionally. So this process, we felt his passion for the PLC process. And even though we were really uncertain, we understood what a PLC was. It was much more difficult to put it into practice. We were fortunate enough for him to prioritize us taking a trip to the PLC Institute. And this experience started us on a journey that shifted the way we looked at RTI and PLC. So I wanted to do a little chant that we learned at the PLC. Yes, I know. Just so everyone can see what we all got to enjoy. So our school becomes a PLC when the professional educators engage in an ongoing, never-ending process of collaboration. This collaboration happens in recurring cycles of collective inquiry. We look at data through common assessments to determine which kids learned it, which ones did not, and what are we, the adults, going to do about it? Because at our school, hope is not a strategy. We then take action. So all kids are learning at high levels. All fun aside, this conference, it was, this conference is where our mindset shifted. This is because they practiced what they preached, that clarity precedes competence. And instead of thinking of RTI as response to intervention, we began to think of the true meaning of RTI. We've taken ownership in the process of RTI, that we are responsible teachers intervening. And that we already had all the tools we needed. Upon returning with the support from Jeff, our conversations deepened, our collaboration became targeted, and most importantly, our understanding of our students' gaps became clear. For example, after examining the data from our Common Formative Assessment, we discovered a pattern in our students' decoding mistakes. When looking at our students' data on decoding CVC words, we found that vowels were the most common mistake students made. This led us to pause our scope and sequence of foundations and insert a five-week Tier One intensive instruction on the vowel sounds. And I can guarantee you, that would not have happened before this. But the best of all was that it worked. We were seeing improvements in our students' decoding skills. I'm really proud of all that we have done engaging in our site at a grade level and with the RTI support staff. But most importantly, I'm proud of the level of support we're giving our students. I'd like to leave you with a quote from the PLC Institute. Support must precede accountability. And that is why we are privileged to here at Proctor, to have an administrator who supports us so that we can support our students. Thank you.
All right, that's hard to follow, but I'll do my best. My name is Carolyn Paxman, and I teach second grade at Proctor. And after attending the PLC conference, our second grade team embraced the idea that we are all collectively responsible for the learning of all students, rather than focusing on just the students within our own classroom. As a result, after giving a Common Formative Assessment, we now look at data across the grade level to see which students did not master standards and which did. From there, we created a plan, we create a plan to address this. This ongoing cycle is repeated every four to five weeks. In one of our sessions at the PLC conference, we learned that intervention for students with the highest need should be administered by the most trained professionals. As a result, this year, our second grade team decided to receive training in 95% group led by our RTI specialist so we could provide targeted intervention in phonics to our groups that still needed to master certain phonics skills. Additionally, during our PLC time, we share our most effective strategies in teaching these standards with one another and collaborate with the RTI team in planning interventions. Our second grade team has built a space of vulnerability as educators where we notice areas for growth within ourselves and are open to learning from one another to ensure the success of all students. We are fortunate to have the support of our principal, who understands the importance of PLC and provides us with the time and resources to continue strengthening the way we collaborate as a team. Attending the PLC conference this past June was a transformative experience for our second grade team, and we look forward to continuing to implement this practice. Thank you.
I'm Allison Stalkup. I'm a kindergarten teacher. And I also had the privilege of going to the conference. Our kindergarten team has taught together for years. And even though we're veteran teachers, implementing the PLC process was a fairly new concept and we found it challenging. Our team got along really well and we always planned activities and projects together. We focused on the what, what we were going to do, and we did that quite well. But this is what we were comfortable with. After being given the opportunity to attend the conference and with the strong leadership and expertise of our principal Jeff, our PLC team now goes much deeper. We have moved our focus from the what we are going to do to the how and the why. We have become better at creating and implementing formative assessments as a team, and we use these results to guide and modify our instruction. We are learning more about each other's classes and each other's different strengths as teachers. Requires a little bit of vulnerability, but we trust one another and we learn so much from each other. We feel that our bonds as a team have grown deeper and our teaching is improving and our student scores are rising. Our children also seem even more passionate about learning. We are grateful for a principal who supports and empowers us. He values the process and gives us the time. This process promotes a growth mindset for both teachers and for students. And Proctor's teachers and students are learning and growing more than ever. Thank you.
I'll be brief. So in brief, professional learning communities lead to improved student learning outcomes, school culture and climate, improved attendance, as well as deeper implementation of many district initiatives such as equitable grading practices, redo retakes, and just in general equity. Just to give you an idea of outcomes. So I modeled the process with attendance. So I set a stretch, we set a stretch goal. Took some, well, actually with attendance, you guys were good. So we set the, our attendance has been for the last couple of years since COVID, around 94 or something percent. This year so far, it's at, I think, 96.10. Every single month, it's been greater than what it was in the month, a year prior. Last year, our chronic absenteeism was 12.1. When I wrote this, it was 6.5. As of today, it's under five. So you can see, this is what it is by month. I can share this with anyone who's interested later. I know we're running out of time. In closing, PLCs are an effective way to co-labor. This process relates to or supports the achievement of almost everything on there, around our vision, promise and mission. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have you come back for questions a little bit later. But first, we're going to have our student board member, Indiana Chilton, come forward to recognize a very special student from Proctor.
Ezra here? Can you come to the stand? The governance team, along with Proctor Elementary School, are proud to honor Ezra Koo as an outstanding student. From kindergarten through fifth grade, Ezra has consistently demonstrated a dedication to his studies that are truly commendable. His hard work and perseverance in the classroom have not gone unnoticed by everyone at Proctor. Ezra approaches each task with enthusiasm and a commitment to excellence, setting a shining example for his fellow students. But Ezra's impact extends far beyond his academic successes. His empathetic nature and outgoing personality make him a natural leader among his peers. It is not often that one sees a fourth or fifth grader consistently putting others' needs before their own. Ezra's warmth and friend, sorry, Ezra's warm and friendly demeanor has made him a beloved figure among his peers. He is well-liked by students and teachers alike, and his positive attitude is contagious. Whether he's spending time with friends or offering words of encouragement to a friend, Ezra's perseverance brightens the day of all around him. Due to his kind, trustworthy and steadfast nature, his peers know that they can rely on him for anything. He is consistently sought out as a partner, a group member, and most of all, a friend. The governance team, along with Proctor Elementary School, are proud to honor Ezra Koo as an outstanding student.
Ezra, get the microphone there. You can speak into that if you want to say something. Or at least recognize people who are here to support you.
I'd like to acknowledge my supporters who have like helped me like through the years at Proctor. I like to acknowledge my family and my teachers too.
Thank you, Ezra. And now Vice President Dolly Adams will be acknowledging our elementary, Proctor Elementary School Volunteer of the Year.
Good, Geneviva Yosa, come up? The governance team, along with Proctor Elementary School, are proud to honor Geneviva Yosa. Geneviva has been volunteering at Proctor Elementary since her daughter Isabel Gross was in kindergarten. She served on the school site council and brought with her new and insightful ideas and questions. She helped at the walk-a-thons, carnivals and in the library with Ms. Bremer for many years. She has organized all our book fairs for the past years. Geneviva is fluent in Spanish, which has been a big help to our staff with communicating with our families. She spent numerous hours helping our Spanish-speaking families get settled into our Proctor community and has also helped with community outreach. We will miss having Geneviva at Proctor. The governance team, along with Proctor Elementary School, are proud to honor Geneviva Yosa as our outstanding volunteer.
Oh, they did not tell me this part. You know, it's been an honor to be a part of the Proctor community. I, you know, we, you know, you're just, you come into a school and you don't really know what to expect when your child is a kinder, a kinder. And it was such a welcoming community. And in the years that we were there, we met some of the most amazing teachers. I really, I've gotten to know them because of the book fair. We get to, I get to know each one of them. And, and I, you know, it's a rare, it's rare, I think, for a parent to say, I don't know who I would like my daughter to get in fourth grade because you like every fourth grade and every third grade and every fifth grade teacher. And I think I, I'm going to miss you guys when my son is in the DLI program at Vanoy, who's an awesome, excellent school as well. But of course, I leave Proctor a little bit with, it's a little bittersweet for us as well. So thank you to all of you for welcoming us, Isabel as well, because of us for a better school. So thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any comments or any questions from the board?
I just wanted to comment on something that was said in the presentation about like the bonds that the teachers were able to build at the conference. And I think that's really important because like as a student, especially in elementary school, I remember seeing like my fourth and fifth grade teachers and it seemed like they were all best friends. And I feel like that really like helped me and it was something fun to look up to because they all had fun working together. And I feel like that really reflected onto their classes. And so we had more fun. So I think that was really important. And I wanted to note that from the presentation. And then to Ezra, I just wanted to say congratulations and just highlight the empathy that was mentioned in the reading. And also, it said that you are kind of what everyone looks for in a partner in school. And I think that's really important because it's not often that you have like that solid person that you know you can go to that will always be a friend. So congratulations and keep being that for everyone else. And congratulations to Genevieve as well.
So just briefly, I wanted to note, I had the privilege about a month and a half ago of coming to your open house at Proctor and meeting several of you in your classrooms and talking with you. And it's clearly a really nice vibe at your school. And obviously, you guys are putting in the work to like create that. And it's, it's, it does not go unnoticed. So even to a stranger, to your school community. So I'm hoping in the next school year to come actually visit properly. So I'll contact you, principal, about that. And yeah, thanks for presenting, trustee Nate.
Mrs. Keller, first I want to say, it's very obvious, your team follows your leadership. They enjoy working with you. They're excited about the work that's extra that to do to help kids. And I just want to thank you so much for what you're driving at your school and thank your team for what you're all doing for kids. I mean, you see the data, you address it, and then you see the results. What you're doing is making a difference in so many kids' lives. And I just want to commend you all for the work that you're doing. And I hope you can give yourself a round of applause, a pat on the back, because it's working. So congratulations. Also Ezra, congratulations, you know, consistently, friendly and a positive contagious attitude. I want to hang out with you. Keep up the good work, making everybody feel safe and special. And I'm sure you'll do great things. And Geneviva, you have a new school to help out and support. And we're so lucky to have you in our community. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for everything that you do.
Well, thanks for coming here this evening with an interesting report, for sure. I've been around Proctor for a long time, and I even recognized several of the teachers that were there when my children were at Proctor. Proctor's been one of the leaders in the community-- in the school community for quite some time. So, and I have to say, as an aside, having visited up there in the last year or so and seeing the Measure G improvements, that campus is so much better now than what it was before. I think it's, it looks terrific. So that's fabulous. And your report tonight I quite enjoyed. I think this emphasis on PLCs and team teaching in particular is really great. I think anything where you can show real improvements in numbers, that's a very hard goal to chase. And you're showing that. So that's really terrific. So thank you very much for that. I was going to ask you about how equitable grading fitted into this, but then you actually mentioned that in your last brief remarks there. So I assume that fits in very nicely. That's a big deal for all of us. So thanks for a great report, and congratulations to Ezra and Genevieve. Thank you.
Thank you, all the Proctor community and to Principal Keller. Response to intervention, or RTI. I really love your new naming of it, Responsible Teachers intervening. That is so much better than the other first words. And also, that support must precede accountability. How terrific that really is. Before the report card goes out and there's some grade that maybe is not so good, the support is there to try to change that. Really wonderful. And I thank Ezra and Genevieve. Thank you so much for being a great student, Ezra, and for volunteering, Genevieve. And then the last thing I want to say, because my daughter went to Proctor for fourth and fifth grade. She's having her wedding this coming-- she's 28 years old, she's having her wedding. And her two best friends from Proctor are her bridesmaids. So good friendships come from Proctor.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. I mean, a lot of just great comments made by when you were presenting. I absolutely love the name Responsible Teachers intervening. That makes so much more sense to me than response to intervention. Because basically, what you're doing is identifying based on data, real data, working together as a professional learning community, and then making plans. Kind of, you know, when you look at data and you see gaps, you then decide what your next steps are. It drives your instruction. So just love it. And I think going to the conference is key. And I want to commend Mr. Keller for wanting to do that. And together, you just create this bond when you're learning together and as professionals going together to something like that. And it is what happens. When you teach together and when you share students together, you then become one. But there was a comment that was made that I think is really important. I think one of the teachers that presented talked about vulnerability. And that's the piece that's really important because you're still colleagues and you have to really have this transparent conversation about, oh, my, you know, when I looked at my data, I didn't see that. Can we talk? So it takes courage, and that's what makes it work. So I want to, I just appreciate that so much, and thank you for everything you're doing. And you see the results. Just your attendance, it's incredible. And then the reading and what you've actually decided to do with subject matters. Ezra, you're just a shining example. And when we talk about empathy, just the fact that everybody wants to-- like, they have identified your skills that really they love to see in themselves. So they always ask for you to be in a part of their group. That's because of who you are and what you have done. So thank you for that. And Genevieve, I thank you so much for, beyond everything that you have rolled up your sleeves to do. You had ideas, but you also rolled up your sleeves to do them and lead them. I really want to thank you for translating. We do have the language line and all of that. But it's something else when a human actually talks to another human right there to help them. And I have seen your son in the DLI. It's going to be an amazing experience as well. So thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you so much for that presentation. As I've reflected with the superintendent before, I think RTI is a really good indicator how it's implemented at the school sites to kind of get a look inside the culture of a school and how successful they're working together as a team. You know, I know in every workplace, there's drama and stuff, but y'all seem to be like, you're aligned, and that's benefiting our kids. And I don't know if folks in the public appreciate what RTI really does. It creates the opportunity for more individualized learning to help kids who are struggling. Like, I was a kid in school who couldn't read until the third grade. And, you know, I appreciate how these type of programs really target kids and support them so they can become more confident readers. So I want to thank you. And it's clear that the leadership is coming from all of you in collaboration with your principal. And that's just, there's something good happening at that school. And so thank you for what you're doing there. Ezra, you know, keep on being you. I think it's pretty obvious. You're a pretty great kid. So congratulations on being honored tonight. And Genevieve, thank you also for your commitment and support of the Proctor community. It sounds like you have two school communities going forward that you can continue supporting. And of course, we will ask you three where? So hold it. Okay, Canyon, Vanoy, and you're going to come back to Proctor. I will say, one of the most grounding things about Castro Valley are our elementary school communities. For so many people, it's the gateway to how you feel centered in this community. And it means so much. It really connects you to our community. So thank you for being a part-- thank you for being a community maker. So with that, we are done. Are there any, no questions for Proctor? So thank you very much for being here. We have a few more things until we go into a brief recess. Let us move back to Student Board Member Indiana Chilton with an update. How many more weeks do we have? Are you counting? Is, are we below 20?
There's like 14 days left.
No.
Yeah, something crazy. I don't know. I don't know. So there is a lot of end-of-the-school-year stuff happening at CVE and a few of the other elementary schools. Of course, everyone is celebrating Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. CVE is having their book fair and an open house on the 16th. And then their fifth-grade promotion is on the 29th. The Shaboo is having their Tiger-Thon. Oh, wait, they had their Tiger-Thon last Friday. At Stanton, the fourth graders are going to Alcatraz on the 15th. So that's exciting. And the fifth graders are going to Dave and Buster's. And then their fifth-grade advancement is on the 30th. At Proctor, they're having the Proctor Family Dance on the 17th. And their Pride Assembly is on the 24th. And their fifth-grade promotion and Field Day is also on the 29th. And then they're also having a fifth-grade picnic. At the middle schools, there was a drama showcase last Friday for Creekside. And their student versus staff basketball game is this Friday. So that's very exciting. And then the eighth graders are having their dance at Creekside on May 24th. And then they're going to Great America on the 28th. And the eighth grade's promotion is on May 30th. And then at the high school-- okay, I wasn't able to get a clip to show it, but every 15 minutes was very successful, and it is on YouTube. It's just 39 minutes long, so. I was, yeah. But that is on YouTube, and that was done with professional videographers. So that was really successful. And then we also had prom last weekend, and that went really well. We're having Ladies Flag Football next week, so that is very exciting. The game is on Friday. This week, AP testing started. Cap and gowns were passed out. Grad night tickets are being sold. Our farewell assembly is already next week, followed by our senior barbecue and senior awards night. And then it is graduation.
So I saw you a little late, not to call you out, but were you at a baseball game by chance?
I was not, in fact.
Because I know that our baseball team right now--
They are playing--
--in a playoff with O'Dowd.
In the playoffs, yes.
Maybe give us an update.
I, I can--
Work on it.
Says I will find it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And it was good seeing you at the game last week. I failed to, sorry, Proctor, Mr. Keller. Would you like to introduce any special people out there in the audience who joined you tonight? Like, your team? We have a mic, we have a mic.
I'm just going to do first names. The bachelor one is Heather. Megan, Carolyn, Maura, Christina, Kamla, Allison, Michelle, Ally, Lori, Jay. That's it. Did I miss someone? Oh, and then two others, Amina and Anne, were here.
Well, I was, thank you for being here. And it's clear what a fantastic team you have. I did ask, what cheer? Do you have a cheer at Proctor? I inspired Vanoy to develop their own. I'm really excited about that. If Ms. Delatorre would like to demonstrate it, she can. But-- Do you have it? No, 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 no. Okay. So what was the one? We came up with 2468 Proctor? Or, okay, 2468 Proctor. So there's a start.
Yeah, that's, we used to do that, playing soccer. It's 2468, who do we appreciate, Proctor?
Okay. I accept that. I accept that.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you again.
Thanks, everyone.
Now, time for our superintendent.
Yeah, just a quick report. We had, I attended-- I know there were a couple of trustees as well at Puente's End of the Year Event. It was absolutely beautiful, full cafeteria. I think Trustee Whitaker was there. I know there was an avid event that Trustee Adams and Mr. Kuziak were there as well. But these are, like, just wonderful opportunities for us to see our families, to see our students, and then kind of see what they've accomplished. It's been amazing. We had a very successful Spring for Education. CVF did a fabulous job again. Volunteers who spent days on end to get that ready because they actually raised money for this year for art and music. It was very successful. In fact, so successful that a dozen cookies-- three dozen, it was three dozen. They became two dozen, I think, by the time people got it. That Mr. Kuziak had baked went for $350. So at the auction. But it was really successful. Lots of people, and I think Trustee Howard-- I noticed the email that you sent. You shared with us with CVF saying, "It's not just an event to raise funds, but it's really, it brings people together." It's kind of something everybody looks forward to. So it was amazing. We also had, last Saturday, Ms. Rashichi and I were at Cal State East Bay pretty much from 8:30 to 2:30 because it was an event. It's called the Leadership Summit. And many, several of our teachers and counselors and Ms. Rashichi and a couple of folks at the district office are in programs there, in the doctoral program. And it was really awesome to see. And just the attention that's given to Castro Valley because of our work with them is really phenomenal. We also had an absolutely wonderful mariachi performance. Some of you might have been there. I posted it on my Facebook because it was so beautiful. All students playing the instrument. Actually, they have one hour of voice, one hour of instrument, instrumental music. Some of them have been in there for five, six years. And if you have not heard them, some of our soloists should really be, like, will be famous. They were absolutely amazing. And then last but not least, I would like to introduce our wonderful new principal to Vanoy, Ms. Soraya, if you could come up. Because, as you know, we're very excited to have her. As you know, Ms. Delatorre, who's sitting right there, has got, has been promoted to the Director of our Multilingual Services. So huge shoes to fill, but we found an outstanding, experienced, awesome person to join us. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, board, superintendent, cabinet, and the community of Castro Valley. My name is Soraya Villasenor, like Superintendent Amati said. And I am really excited to go back to the site, go back to working with students, with families, with teachers, and really do the work. That's where, not that our work over here is not important, but that's where we really see the difference in our kids. And I'm just really excited and humbled to be chosen as the Vanoy Next Principal and excited to join the community. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome to our community. And I think I would agree with you. It's the work that's being, that happens in our school that's-- I would give an edge over to what we do here. And with that, we're going to have a five-minute break. I'll tell Siri that I have to have a five-minute alarm. And so in five minutes, we will come back to the rest of our meeting. And you're welcome to stay and join us for that. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, oh, sorry, is number eight. Uh, California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Do we have a representative from CSEA here tonight to report? Do we have a representative from CBTA here tonight, either online or in person to report? We do not. So let us go to the next item. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Uh, we have received two blue sheets and then one online. Let's first ask Santiago Jimenez to join us up here. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Try to make it quick. My name is.
The mic is on. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Santiago Jimenez. My son is a fifth generation Castro Valley resident. I grew up here. I went to Proctor Elementary. I went to CB Elementary. I've been through the whole system. Case in point, the reason I'm here is for bullying and our lack of doing anything about it. My son missed almost six months of school in fifth grade because of it. We had to pursue legal action. That's all I will say about that. As we signed on to yell. Go to middle school. Now, I remember middle school at Canyon. It was rough. Okay. It was rough for me. Shortest kid in school, buck teeth, glasses. Came from an abusive home. Okay. But I fought through it. I got through it because I was a mean whatever. Because I was used to fighting with my stepdad. It wasn't a problem fighting with these kids. My son, I was worried. Now, let me tell you why I'm worried about my boy. Okay. One, he's of short stature because his dad is. Number two, he has pituitary dwarfism. His pituitary gland in his brain never developed. It didn't grow between the ages of two and four. I give him injections every day and it's not because I really want him to be large. It's because otherwise he wouldn't have lived past 10 without the injections. His internal organs wouldn't. On top of that, he also has severe ADD. He also has, excuse me, I'm trying not to get worked over. He also has severe dyslexia, which we begged for a long time to get him tested for, and we were flat out told they wouldn't test. They wouldn't test. That other situation I told you about magically testing happened and he's not autistic. He has three types of the four of dyslexia and ADD. So of course he can't focus on anything academic. Everything flips around on him. Now, I know how these kids can be in middle school, right? So I was worried, but we take it in stride, right? The first month, one of the eighth graders who stands a foot taller than my kid and is on the football team chased him down for doing a dance he didn't like and pummeled him in the back of the head till he busted his hand and gave my son a concussion. There was no staff there. Nobody. Thank God that kid busted his hand because if he had not busted his hand, how much damage could he have done if he would have just kept hitting until he got tired? So what was I supposed to do? We talked to the school? That, I guess, is equivalent to a one-day suspension, right? You can almost kill a kid by punching him in the back of the head. Chasing a kid from the special class that's half your size, a one-day suspension sounds equivalent, right? I really think what they should have done is let that kid's parents meet my child. I think once they saw this kid and this kid standing there, it's inexcusable. You don't really need an explanation. There's no reason for a child that big to be done once more. So what do I do? I'm sorry, I have no faith in the system to stop my child from getting bullied. Okay? So I put him in jujitsu. Every night I work out. We do kettlebell exercises, push-ups, sit-ups. I said, I'm sorry, kid, you're from loving home. You're not naturally mean like I am. I gotta toughen you up. Okay. Two weeks ago.
So Mr. Jimenez, yeah, so three minutes. Um, if you have additional comments, you are absolutely welcome to email those comments to us i- if, if there's additional things that you'd like to say. So, um, if you have anything else you'd like to do, that, that, that's, that could be your path forward.
My point is he got surrounded by 12 kids.
Understood. Your three minutes, your three minutes are over. Thank you. Amanda Carey.
All right, back at it. To the silent majority in Castro Valley who want SORs to return, I need your help. My request is for community members to attend board meetings, to share your stories, and call the police to report incidents at school. The main argument I hear is we don't want SROs on campus policing student, students. We can still have a relationship with ASCO without, that gives them access to Aries, but they are not tied to any one campus. Per the board bylaws under risk management, it states the district shall strive to keep liability to a minimum. How's it going? A settlement was paid out to the student who was attacked at Canyon in 2021, in part because you failed to call the police and at the time of the incident did not provide medical attention. An SRO would have called EMS. She was diagnosed with a severe concussion after her parents took her to ER. I addressed my concerns with McMaster after I heard the attacker was charged with felony assault, was transferred to Creekside and not expelled. He told me we can't expel kids in California. This is clearly not true. I have talked to several families whose child has received a concussion since the incident and nothing has changed. No call to the police and no medical attention. Regarding the incident this year with the gun at the high school, the police report notes the student was expelled. No arrest was made and McMaster did not wish to pursue criminal complaint against the student. He requested the officer reach out to the child and really reiterate how dangerous his actions were and how they could have resulted in an unfortunate outcome. This is a perfect example of how the sheriff's department respected the school's wishes and did not police the student. A student first witnessed the male with the gun and didn't call 911. What education was given to the students and staff to make sure this never, if this happens again? I'm guessing there was no training because the district tried to hide the incident. You claim to care about child safety, but how is truancy being handled at the district without the help of SROs? Who is doing the well check on these kids? You can put up all the murals and build all the non-binary bathrooms you want, but from the CB High 2022-23 School Accountability Report Card, truancy amongst the non-binary students is 50%. A 2023 U.S. National Survey on Mental Health of LGBTQ Young People states roughly half of transgender and non-binary youth seriously consider attempting suicide. The homeless subgroup for this chronic absenteeism rate is 37%. Are these children in danger? Can they not get a ride to school? Are they hungry? No one knows. If we allow the SROs to have access to Aries, they could help teachers and administrators concerned about students' well-being. Parveen states, "We already work closely with the sheriff's office in many ways and changing our contract is not being considered." The fact is, the relationship the district has with SROs works for the district, not the community. As Mike Pence famously quoted, "You are entitled to your opinion, but you are not entitled to your own facts."
Thank you for your comments. It looks like we have another audience member who'd like to speak? Yeah. No, it's not a problem. Thank you so much. Um, Vanessa Jimenez? And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Wasn't really prepared to speak, but after hearing my husband in regards to my son, um, he's a Creekside student. My son has had over 27 incidents of being bullied. He's missed over 45 days of school. You heard about my son's health and his history as being a parent to a student that's already struggling in the SDC. It is very, um, it, it hurts. And to see your son be so upset that these kids can say and do anything they want and act without impunity, it makes you feel horrible. I have been at the school probably more than any parent in regards to bullying and hearing about my child being punched in the head, being put in garbage cans, afraid to use the restroom. He's been stomped and most recently, my son was involved in a group chat that he was put into by his classmates where they threatened to re-stomp him, referred to him as Piggy. My son has body dysmorphia now from being fat-shamed and my son's 107 pounds and barely five feet. He is not fat. Um, they made death threats and I don't think these children even got a suspension. There was, you shouldn't do that. They don't know better because they're SDC. Okay? How does my child walk into a classroom of 12 kids with half of the class knowing that they hate him? And just happened last week when my son was out for a week, 12 kids circled him. He was punched and hit and when he defended himself, he was told he was wrong. Now, I, I don't know what else to do. Had there been some type of SRO officer to contact, I think a lot of these incidents could have not gotten as far as they did. I think that we could have had contact with the parents. I think there could have been some type of mediation between us to figure out what needed to be fixed. Because the staff at the school and as far as the district as well, has not helped me. I have reached out to everybody, including Parveen, numerous times. I have a paper trail numerous times. I have had to file a grant with the state to start a, a civil lawsuit in regards to my son being bullied to attend school like any other child and get his education that this district has failed to give him. My son started the sixth grade with a first-grade education. He couldn't read. He couldn't write. And it is because this, this school here looked so much into he was diagnosed with autism that he does not have after having an IEE evaluation that they didn't think that when I told them over and over since first grade that he had dyslexia, to even have a care about it. So my son struggles academically because you people failed to educate him. My son struggles socially because he's been put into a classroom that he does not fit. Cognitively, he does not fit, but academically, he is behind because he has been failed to be educated. And now he is bullied relentlessly. These kids give no care. And I am sorry, I'm not trying to put all children into this, but there is a huge portion. And they know that there are no repercussions for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Um, let, let's go online. We have one comment from Mary.
Sorry about this. Hello, everyone?
You're, you're unmuted. Uh, you can start, Mary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I haven't never done this before like this. I'm usually present. Um, I just want to say that, um, twofold, as a parent of Creekside, uh, I only am speaking as a parent that I really wish, I don't know what happened with my comments prior about when the district approved some, uh, fundage for the high school for their new scoreboards and stuff like that. And thanks to the PTC, Creekside, and the district is now, has this beautiful brand-new marquee at, um, Creekside, which is amazing. But it would really be nice to see if, um, the district can help us, you know, cover at least some portion of the cost, since we did do a lot of fundraising and now it is district property, um, which helps beautify the campus and makes it more desirable for future, uh, for the future of Creekside. Second comment is, um, I would like to just say that I support any resources for our students. I, um, do believe that having some way of an on-campus SRO officers would bridge some, bridge some gaps, would, um, allow some resources for the students, the families, the staff. I think people would be better behaved, um, when they feel like there will be consequences for their actions. I know that the SRO officers or the sheriff's department works closely with our district and shows up when they're called. Whether they're called by staff or they receive prank 911 calls. It seems like it would be more cost-effective to have SRO officers who are scheduled to be on our campuses, and I think it would hold everybody accountable. So I don't, I, I understand fundage is a big thing, but also our kids' safety, our staff's safety, um, whether it's in the classroom or, um, or around the camp, campus and different events. Nobody, not our students of any caliber, nor our staff, should feel, um, like they don't have some security. And the fact that what happened at the high school, that a car just was able to drive onto campus, at least that's the information going around on, uh, out in the public. That concerns me as I am a future high school parent. Uh, I'll be leaving Creekside and entering, uh, the high school next year, school year, and that concerns me quite a bit. Um, I think having more strict guidelines, whether it's behavioral or dress code, would also help the kids behave more. They know that there are consequences for their actions. So thank you for your time.
Mary, thanks so much for calling in. It's good to hear from you. Ms. Kay, are there any additional comments? Thank you so much. Um, with that, we're going to go to our next agenda item. It's the consent agenda.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda.
We have a first motion. Do we have a second motion? We have a one and a two. Uh, let us now vote on it. Student Board Member, Indiana Chilton.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. It passes six to zero. Uh, let us now go on to item number 11A, the 2023-2024 Proposition 28 Visual and Performing Arts VAPA Update. Uh, let's now go do that update.
Hello. How's it going? So I'm just up here really quick to introduce, uh, everything and then I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer. Oh, well, you know who I am. Pat Anderson Schmidt, independent principal. Uh, but before we get into this, we need to pay homage, not pay homage, but, uh, recognize the folks that are actually in the classroom doing the work with the students. Um, this is a list of all of our VAPA teachers in the district from elementary to high school. I mean, they're the ones that are actually making all of this that you're going to see tonight happen. Then, uh, we've been increasing, as you know, with Prop 28 funds, and we're continuing to increase our VAPA programming, um, which Jennifer is going to talk a little bit about today. Uh, but before I hand it over to her, I wanted to, uh, really set the tone with our vision statement because I think it really encaps, encapsulates everything that we're doing this year and how we're doing it. And I'm going to read it directly because it does such a good job. Um, it says, "Our vision for the CVSD Visual and Performing Arts Department is rooted in diversity, inclusivity, empower, and empowerment through the arts. We aim to provide a wide range of arts disciplines to all students, fostering creativity and self-expression and ensuring accessibility at all schools and all grade levels. Our commitment is to eliminate barriers, enhance the quality of arts education, and unite staff in supporting arts programming to make the arts a central part of every student's life." And what that means is teachers are presenting a wide variety of artists, performers, ideas, modes of, um, expression that mirror the diversity and cultures of our students. Uh, they're providing opportunities for students to explore their interests and their cultures and themselves. And we're uplifting the voices and movements and performances and visual works of cultures and communities that have traditionally been overlooked and undervalued. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Jennifer Jervis, our Visual and Performing Arts TOSA, to talk about what we've done.
Welcome, Jennifer Jervis.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Jennifer Jervis, the, um, TOSA for Visual and Performing Arts. Um, very happy to be here tonight. Um, so first I want to show you what is new this year. So very exciting. Um, we have elementary art first through fifth grade, um, new this year. So these are some photos of, uh, the students at work. Um, new this year, we have lower elementary music. So in the past, we've had. New this year, we have lower elementary music. So in the past, we've had music for fourth and fifth grade. So now we have music first through third as well. So in the picture, we can see the amazing Mr. Reinboldt with lower elementary. They're doing a lot of movement, getting music in their bodies, learning some simple instruments like xylophones. Third graders are doing recorder. New this year, we have a theater class at Creekside. They had their drama showcase last week on Friday. The first time in either a long time or first time ever that Creekside has had a theater showcase happening. New this year, some of you were able to attend our first annual district art show, featuring artwork from every school in our district. And thankfully, it was part of the Ed Foundation Dinner as well. People got to come in and see the art show. New next year, we're very excited about this. We're going to have a dance program coming to Castro Valley High School. It's beginning with one or two periods this coming year, depending on the sign up and interest, and then hopefully it's going to grow over the years. We'll be repurposing the old mat room over the summer to make it a versatile space that will work for both dance and wrestling and for other purposes that the school needs that room for. I've had the opportunity to partner with our special education classes at Canyon to increase the art access there. And also the Roy Johnson Program. I've worked with them with ceramics lessons and other art opportunities. We have a counselor enriched program at Redwood and I've been able to work with that teacher for ongoing art lessons. And then I love working with the SDC classes at Canyon since I've been housed there this year. So these are photos of Mr. Baumgartner's class doing some printmaking. We did some snowflakes in the wintertime. I partnered with Stanton and Canyon to, to apply for competitive grants for the Walt Disney Family Museum Partnership. So both schools were winners of these grants. They had museum educators come in over the school year and they also got field trips to the museum paid for by the museum. So it was a full-service program. So in these photos on the left-hand side, you can see Stanton students at the museum doing some education projects. And on the right-hand side, the educators at Canyon in the classroom, working with students, teaching them animation. They will end up with an animated short of about 30 seconds or so using multi-plane cameras that were developed by Walt Disney. One of my former students is an animator for Disney and he's also a former Marshall Mustang. So I partnered him with the fifth grade classes at Marshall to give career talks. He also spoke at Palomeros last Friday with the fifth grade class there. So it's been exciting to bring art careers into the classroom. At Canyon, we've repurposed the woodshop into an art classroom. Everything is still intact for the woodshop in case they want to make that a multi-use space if they can bring in another woodshop teacher. But currently, the art teacher is working in that classroom and it's a really great space. It's huge. It's got wonderful ventilation and giant tables. It's been a really great opportunity to have that classroom this year. We've done some school murals with a professional artist at Chabot and Vanoy. So here you see pictures of the students at Chabot and the lower picture is the artist working at Vanoy. So at Chabot, every student in the entire school made marks on that wall, the long wall. And then the smaller wall was a piece dedicated to Paw Power, which is Chabot's motto. And then the piece on the lower right-hand side, that's at Vanoy in honor of Ms. Metcalf, the teacher from Vanoy, but also it celebrates the DLI program and has words within the piece that are in both Spanish and English. I learned how to make GIFs to enhance this presentation because performing arts is really nothing without the movement. So we've had some amazing performances through a nonprofit called Rhythmx that brings cultural dance performances to our schools and they're all interactive. So this is an ancestral Filipino group and they are teaching the students at Stanton in this photo or this little clip, how to do some basic movements. They are, they are being water in this video. This is a Palomeros. This is a Caribbean rhythms group. And again, you can see the entire school because Palomeros is really small. That's the entire school there. You know, getting those rhythms in their bodies along with the performers. And this was amazing. We had every fifth grader in the district come up to the CFA in two shifts, two, two field trips to watch Polynesian dancers and performers. And again, even in the CFA, which is a really big space and can be, you know, distance from the performers to the audience, the audience is participating. And we've had the opportunity to have some really great professional development opportunities for our VAPA teachers. So here we see our music educators at a conference in Sacramento and then also our music educators learning a new curriculum for lower elementary. That's going to be really exciting to implement. And we have expansion plans for next year. Again, we're going to have dance at the high school, which is a huge opportunity for our students. Expanded music and visual art for fourth and fifth grade. So they'll get art and music every week. And you know, this year it's been alternating through the year between art and music. Expanded art resources are going to be available for PK, TK and kindergarten. Visual art is coming to Creekside, which is really exciting. Cultural music at Canyon and ceramics also is coming to Canyon. So those are our plans for next year. And thank you.
I want to just add a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank you. Thank Patrick for really leaving all of this with you and our music and art teachers. But I want to thank her especially because tonight is actually her husband's birthday and she's here presenting.
Oh.
So we got to do some.
I asked him first before I accepted.
So I just wanted to thank you, but there has been such an amazing transformation that one of the things I wanted to share is we have so many students taking, wanting to sign up for music next year that we have like, we have to purchase instruments from our Prop 28 money for about $100,000. That's amazing. So many kids. In like four or five years, we will have to fit them all on that, you know, just, it's incredible. So thank you so much for everything you guys are doing to make this work.
Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Raymond?
I'm, I'm just like blown away. I mean, I knew, I knew that you guys were doing so much just to like inject art, music, performance, opportunities into the lives of our kids. I had no idea how many outside resources you guys are drawing on. And I am, I'm really impressed at the grant that you got with the Disney Museum because that place is incredible. I've, I've participated in workshops there myself just because out of interest and I'm, I'm, I think how incredible that these kids are going to walk away with their own animation. Like, you know, from this experience, I hope we can see some of them. I also am just super attached to her that that mural at Vanoy is in honor of Ms. Metcalf because she was treasurer. She was one of our teachers for my family and yeah, so we love her quite a lot. And those murals are beautiful. I love the idea of, you know, these collective experiences for our kids to come in and put their hands on something that's going to last. So yeah, I'm very sorry I couldn't make it to the art show. So next time though, for sure. I'm just really, really floored. It's just so beautiful to see this happen.
Student Board Member Indiana Chilton.
I just wanted to say I love that you guys are getting like performers to come to the school and that it's interactive too. I loved stuff like that in elementary, like when the choir teachers would come. So I think that's really important and definitely getting kids excited. And I have heard a lot of excitement about the dance class coming to the high school. So I'm excited for that too.
Trustee Whitaker.
I just want to say, Ms. Jervis, I've known you for a while, not personally, but known of you. And I know that Nick was one of your friends for a while there and you know, just thinking about integrating art into our schools helps us be a more dynamic, welcoming community. Art is such a space for some kids. It's their only outlet. And if you're an artist, which you are, you know that if you are an artist, that's where you need to be to feel alive. If you're not practicing your craft, if you don't have a space and being able to help kids understand their craft and their space is going to help them be happier, healthier adults and more well-rounded humans. So appreciate all the work that you and the team are doing to integrate and insert art into everything that we do across K through 12. Thank you.
I have some comments and, oh, Vice President Adams.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you very much for what you're doing for all the students to have more art. But also, you know, just, you know, I guess everybody in this room knows this, but you know, the arts actually also help all kinds of other intellectual development, like with the math and numbers and spatial things. So really thank you for that. It's going to also improve people's, children's academics as well. And yes, I'm so excited that you have, that there's going to be dance at the high school. I took ballet years ago in high school. They used to have it back in, back in the olden days. But it's good to see that they'll have it again. And you could get PE credit back then. I don't know how that'll work now, but yes.
Did you have anything you wanted to add? No.
I'm just blown away. I really am blown away. I look at, I think we're one of the very few districts who is this far, but that doesn't happen with us just standing here and talking about it. It happens because we have amazing teachers and amazing administrators to work together to make it happen. But I just see the kids in these classes are so, so happy. And I love the, the focus on the, on culture and really bringing in all sorts of things for people to be exposed to. And I'm definitely looking forward to seeing our, our students in the dance class. So thank you.
Well, I want to thank you and your efforts, Trustee Amadi. I, I know that our district wasn't cynical about this funding. We didn't do budget tricks to sweep away our arts program and then use these funds to bring it back. We, we said we would add on and build this up and a lot of districts didn't do that. So I appreciate that. I really love what I was seeing here. I've noticed this past year, I don't know if it's directly because of you, but the, I've seen an upgrade to the art around the district office. It's, it's really lovely to see. And I did see the senior show over at the CFA and it's just, it's just amazing what our students, artists, what they reflect on and like, wow, they have big thoughts. I have a question, an idea, and she's not going to be happy, but I have an idea. No, no, no. The dance slide, well, I think it relates to our conversation at the board workshop about PE. We might want to think about that. But I want to propose or think about something. Wouldn't it be great if we had like an archive and like a museum of the art produced by our students in this district? Just to have like a living something. And I'm just putting it out there what that could be. I don't know. Yeah, I could just be delirious at this point.
Mike, are you going to do some performance dance?
I will do the electric slide for everyone.
Electric.
Yes, it will be embarrassing. Yeah, I just, I was just thinking about, yeah, I'd love to sort of, I just think about some of the things I see and I archive them for myself and I share some of the pictures I see. And it'd be wonderful if we could preserve some of that history of Castro Valley. And then again, unincorporated community, there's not a lot of people looking out for our memory, our history and who we are. And maybe it's something we could think about. So I'm just putting that out there and I really appreciate all that you're doing. And I don't think people appreciate, I love that seeing the Polynesian dancing. The Bay Area is like a center for Hawaiian dance and culture. A pretty famous one is based here in the East Bay. They were involved with like Lulu and Stitch. And they go to the festival on the Big Island and have won some competitions there. So it's, we're a center for that. So it's really cool that our kids are being exposed to the culture. Thank you for what you do.
I would say an archive is possible.
Archive is.
Is possible.
Okay, let's do it. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. Our next item, I always enjoyed this report, is the Tri-Valley Teacher Induction Project Annual Report.
I'd like to just give a brief introduction to our coaches. They do more than just curriculum and instruction and instructional strategies and collaborate with teachers. But each year goes by, I also learn that they're also daily therapists. So they need to add other T to the TV tip. Just for consideration, but they do a great job in providing great support for all of our new certificated staff.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the lovely introduction. Board President Kuziak, members of the board, Superintendent Amadi and Cabinet. Thank you for that introduction and we appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight to share about our teacher induction program. With me tonight is my amazing team, Tom Guler, Joanna Hogan and Pat Eppert. Some of you may know, but one of our teammates is actually retiring. Sorry, Pat. Sorry. True, but this is quick. Don't worry, but we had to recognize you. For many of us here, Pat hasn't just been a colleague. She's been a friend, a mentor. And sometimes it's felt like a one-woman problem-solving department. Within our TV tip coaching group, we often say, what would Pat do? Well, Pat, for all the times you've helped us navigate tricky situations, both professional and personal, thank you. We will miss your expertise, your calming presence, and of course, your ability to fix just about anything. Here's to Pat, our friend, mentor and all-around superwoman.
Should have looked at all the speaker notes and then I would have known.
I hid them from you.
We even stood up. So that's really, you got to say something now.
One of my goals is to learn how to use Canva. I still have three weeks to work on that. Maybe I would have found them hidden somewhere, but thank you. I've been so fortunate to be able to be part of this team for a number of years. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. So on to TV Tips Up. I'm going to start with accreditation. So back in 2020, we began rewriting, actually new program with Dublin, Livermore and ourselves. We are looking at the site visit in March 2025. That's what's on the docket right now. The three district coordinators have been preparing for that next stage. We've met with our CTC rep just last week. So now it's a weekly meeting until that March 2025 visit. Yeah.
So what is TV Tip? And one of the things I thought, if we could, if I could share with it in terms of how it fits into the whole context of becoming a teacher in California, it helps to understand where this induction program fits in. We all know that when you first want to become a teacher, you get into a university program where you take classes and you get your student teaching done, and then you end up with a preliminary credential. The second step is that then you can go out and get a job and if you're really, really lucky, you get a job in Castro Valley Unified School District. And that's where TV Tip or the induction program comes into play. For the first two years of every teacher in the state of California, the state requires that they be part, they get support from an induction program. It's a state-approved program that's based on two groups of standards. The program, the induction program standards from the state as well as the California standards for the teaching profession. So in Castro Valley, the induction program is called TV Tip. So what is that? It's a job-embedded, individualized coaching support program. And how that would look in a classroom is that we as coaches or, or each new teacher gets one of us as a coach. And what's so nice because we're fully released, we can spend time during the school day in the classroom with each teacher as they are interacting with their students and teaching their students. And we can look at the curriculum, look at the teacher's style, look at the students that that teacher is working with and really individualize that support. That's really important too, that in our program, as we continue to evolve, is that we really pull in the research from really respected education educators throughout the field. After the two-year program, our teachers are able to apply for their clear professional credential, which is really the permanent teaching credential. So that's what we are, but also who are we? We're part of a consortium made up of three districts. Actually, I guess I'm supposed to push the button.
Yep, thank you.
We are, we join with Dublin and Livermore as three districts. And for the last couple of years, our coordinators, our leaders thought, you know, it'd be good to. And for the last couple of years, our coordinators, our leaders thought, you know, it'd be good if we had a theme that really drives our work and keeps us focused. And they came up with Coaching With, With Heart, which if you look at the acronym, really stands for Building Habits of Mind with an Equity Lens by aligning our processes and reflecting as a team. This theme is something that continues to guide our work as a consortium, as well as individual coaches, and actually falls right in with the teachers as well. Our focus, of course, is with teachers, but really it's so that teachers can be as effective as possible to help our students to be successful in, in, in life and in the classroom. This year in Castro Valley, we actually have the four of us as induction coaches. We are supporting a total of 48 teachers here in Castro Valley. That includes both special ed and gen, general ed teachers. And those 48 teachers are touching the lives of over 6,000 of our students every day here in Castro Valley. So that's who we are and what we are, and I'm going to turn it down over to John, to Don Goulart. Thank you.
Okay, on the screen, you can see our program goals. As you read these goals, let me explain the methods we use to achieve them. Our program engages in one-on-one interactions with our teacher, teacher candidates prioritizing goals chosen by the teachers in alignment with the California standards for the teaching profession. Through this individualized approach, our program assists educators in reinforcing exemplary practices within and outside the classroom as outlined by the California standards for the teaching profession, with the ultimate aim of promoting the academic progress of all students. After seeing our program goals, you may be wondering what exactly is a TV tip coach? And I know Pat touched a little bit on that as well. This is a question that's often asked of us, just like any educator and induction coach wears many hats, as you can see on the slide above. A TV tip coach, or as some may say, a Sherpa of services, is an adept instructional leader proficient in guiding teachers towards innovative practices through continuous collaboration, mentoring, modeling and reflection. As previously stated, we work with teachers one-on-one, starting with a focus on teacher chosen goals based on the CSTPs. As coaches, we aim to balance just-in-time support with a vision towards long-term professional growth. As TV tip coaches, we strive to strike a balance between providing timely assistance and fostering a vision for sustained professional development. Our overarching goal is to accelerate growth and enrich the advancement of participating teachers through a thoughtful, continuous and systematic approach during their participation in our high-quality induction program. As our motto states in our logo, we are supporting students one teacher at a time.
It wouldn't be a board presentation without a little data. So I am the lucky person who gets to present that. We're really, as coaches, we try to walk the talk. We ask our teachers to analyze data, performance data for their students. So likewise, we spend a lot of time looking at our data. Every year, TV tip surveys its teachers, its coaches and its site administrators and uses that feedback for continual program improvement. The coaches analyze the feedback data and survey data really closely, as does our steering committee, which is always welcoming new members. If anybody would be interested on the board, just talk to us afterward. The data you see on this slide and on the next slide are both Castro Valley teachers only. We distilled it out from the entire consortium. So this is just data from Castro Valley teachers. And as you can see, this data tells us that overall Castro Valley teachers feel like the TV tip program prepares them very well in all six of the California standards for the teaching profession, which are listed sort of abbreviatedly listed on the left-hand side. Engaging students, creating effective environments for learning, understanding subject matter, planning instruction, using assessment and developing as an educator. And not to be left in the digital dust, our fearless coordinator fed all of our survey data into AI, looking for trends. And what we learned from that is actually not new information. We've seen this trend actually for several years now. The aspects of the TV tip program that teachers report most positively impacting their practice are the emotional support and the confidential space for reflective conversations that are provided by coaches. Two things, incidentally, that AI and Google searches cannot provide. Just saying. Other aspects that teachers value highly are the in-the-moment feedback that coaches can get, or that coaches give on teachers' teaching practice. Opportunities to collaborate with coaches and with other teachers and with TOSSAs like Ms. Jarvis and other TOSSAs that we have on staff. Setting goals and also learning how to support students with IEPs and divergent learning. So when we think about our program and the things that we're proud of, besides our teachers, these are some of the highlights. That top hyperlink are our newsletters. Those are our monthly newsletters. We always have a theme. We have pertinent articles and activities and suggestions for bringing a little bit of joy into our teachers' classrooms. They are shared, this newsletter is shared out with all site administrators and district admin, as well as all the new teachers in TV tip. We have that district resource game board for all of our new hires. And then we've updated our website because of accreditation. We have a new sped TV tip website. And when you can't sleep at night, check out our accreditation website at the bottom. There's lots on there, but that's, that is the, the kind of, we've been working a lot on that accreditation website. The CTC team has to have that, so that's where all the work is. All right, on to the fun part of tonight. This evening, we want to congratulate our Castro Valley Year Two teachers for completing our induction program. Our induction participants continue to work diligently with the coach, reflecting and refraining practice with the goal of improving learning outcomes for all students. For those TV tip teachers who might be watching tonight or listening, thank you for your dedication and commitment to our Castro Valley students. Please join us in celebrating the following Year Two participating teachers who will soon be awarded a California Clear Teaching Credential. After we read all the names, we'll give a huge round of applause. So our TK, Year Two teachers, we have Ms. Marina, who's DLI, TK at Vanoy, Terry Judean Marshall, and then Laura Ainsworth at Castro Valley Parent Nursery School. Yeah, I know. K5 teachers, we have Thomas Foley at CVE, Veronica Sanchez at CVE, Sarah Kim at CVE, Sarah White at Shaboo, Stephanie Clark at Jensen and Ming He Song at Jensen. Our 612, how do I get the bottom to go away? There we go. Cassie Sand at Creekside, Sam Johnson at Castro Valley High, Jimmy Stevens at Canyon, Alex Ariano at CVHS, Kezia Yofuru at CBHS, Vanessa Veronica Diaz at Canyon, Eliana Rangle at Canyon, Alison Bruley at Canyon. And then we have Victor Wu at Castro Valley High, Cameron Ritchie at Canyon, Zach Valdez at Castro Valley High, Melissa Moss at Creekside, Steve Aguayo at Canyon and Juan Escalante at Castro Valley Unified. So let's give a huge round of applause. Thank you to all of you. We haven't had a big group like this in quite a while, so. In addition to recognizing them tonight, our TV tip team will begin classroom recognition starting next week, where our coaching team and site administrators visit the teacher in their classroom and recognize them in front of their students. Each teacher is presented with a very fancy certificate and a small token of our appreciation. And it's just been a really nice way to honor their work and hear the kids talk about how they appreciate their teacher. Just to close, we want to thank Superintendent Amadi, the board, and especially Dr. Zamora for all of your support with our induction program. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Let us go to our board, our trustee member Howard. He has a question or a comment.
Well, comment is thanks for another great year of terrific work. That's always great to hear. But I do have a question. It's a dumb question. And that is, I mean, I get the fact that you have to have a college degree and you have to get a teaching credential along with that. What do they do to get a clear credential? You know, do they just, is it two years worth of reasonable work in the schools or satisfying a bunch of requirements that you guys have?
Yes, so there are, yeah, there are induction. No, it's, that's, yeah, it's, it's to clear your credential, it's a two-year program. It's four to six hours a month for those whole two years. And there are processes within those two years that they go through. In the beginning of the year, they're setting goals based on the CSTPs. We're looking at students and data and just getting to know their students. In the middle of the year, actually two times a year, we do full cycles of inquiry. That's that plan, teach, reflect, apply. And then at the end of the year, we reflect again on their CSTP goals. So my, my team, we get to go in four to six hours with every one of our teachers and we observe them. We meet with them and reflect on their teaching practices. What else am I missing? Did I miss anything? Yeah, cycles, that's, yeah. It's a lot of time and the, but the benefit of having the full-time release versus other cities that have the mentor just as their neighbor. We get to get in right away. So that first month of school, we can support those teachers with whatever they need, positive or negative. So, yeah, sure.
I just, I mean, there are two ways to, to think about that. I think we could, like even for administrators, they have to get their preliminary credential and then their second tier. But when you have to just go to college and take some more classes versus what they actually do in TV tip, it's totally different. It's very rigorous. It's one-on-one. There is so, there's a lot of work that they have to do. So as new teachers, you also have all of this. But the beautiful thing is they have amazing people who support them. Because I do remember what it, before it's, it was induction, it was called BITSA. We all are familiar with BITSA. It was really hard for teachers. So this, this model of induction has been game-changing. And California is one of the very few states that actually has it. Other countries actually look to California for this sort of induction program. It's, it's amazing, but you got to have the right people doing it. And that's, that's what makes a difference. And I wanted to say for the, for CTC to come and actually approve, this is like huge. That's why it takes like three, four years and all three districts are working together. If you remember, we used to have something different and you guys did a great job just kind of putting it together. That's right. So it's, 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 it's incredible. And, and they don't just give you accreditation. It's like climbing Mount Tamalas.
And the other board comments? I just want to express my gratitude. There's two teachers on there who my family and my child is directly benefiting from. I like to think they wouldn't need induction because they're just, you can just see a natural teacher ability in them. And I really appreciate the, the intentionality of this program. I sat down with you all, was it two years ago, with my world famous cookies? Was it this year? It was last year with my world famous cookies that sold for $350. Yum for free, but it's, it's, it's just the, the intentionality is just amazing to me. The fact that we create the safe space for new educators to reflect and to honestly to fail and to reflect on that, that failure without fear that Raoul's going to come and get them. So no, no, honestly, I, I just, sorry. No, no, honestly, I think this is wonderful. And this is, it's consistent with, I think, our values as a school district, right? When we talk about how we want to create pathways for our kids to, 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 to move forward and learn. So I, I love this and you can definitely see stronger teachers from this. Yes.
I just want to say, when I did my credential, I didn't have any support after I got in the classroom. There's no BITSA, any of that. And it was hard. You know, I was kind of scrambling to, you know, other, find my own master teachers around me to help me. And I did, and I somehow made it. But I could see that if you don't have that kind of support system, some people just aren't gonna maybe go out there and get the help. So they may not make it as a teacher. So I think this is really wonderful, the program that you're doing, and it is better than the in-between thing, which was BITSA. So great, great job. Thank you. I have two.
Superintendent Amadi.
Yeah, two things to say. First of all, their newsletter, I think if you put it together, you can sell it as a book and sell a ton of money. It's so wonderful. When I get it, I look through and I'm like, oh my gosh, here's another idea, even for just anybody. It's, it's very exciting to see. The other piece I wanted to say, which trustee Adams kind of was talking about, is we didn't have that. And this is why a lot of teachers would start and quit. And even today, depending on the kind of TV, TV tip support you have, if you look at our data about retention, it's very different when you have this kind of thing versus when it's, it's induction, but it doesn't work this way. So our retention for our new teachers is incredible. I don't know if you can say.
Yep, yeah, we, right now we are at 86%. So that's, I think that is as well. 56 is the national average.
It's just too bad along, once you get to something like this program, that we don't pay our teachers going into the, to get their education to be student teachers and.
But.
It's great, so many hurdles.
But you guys also approved that wonderful stipend once they do finish TV tip and have another year with us. And all of our teachers, because right now we're doing a lot of end-of-year processes as we're doing reflection and just they get units for being in our program. And then we tell them about this stipend and they're like, oh, that's gonna be amazing. So they really appreciate your support.
Well, thank you to your, for your service to Castro Valley Unified. Pat, happy, is it resignation or retirement? What are we? Small break.
She's offered to help with the accreditation.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And then let us move on to board comments and reports. No, I totally messed that up. I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm looking at the, pause. I, we have another thing. Oh yeah, we have other important things. Okay, item 11C. Let's adopt a declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. If I get a translation of what that is, and then we can do motions.
This is just our second public notice with the attachment that we're asking the board to approve 20 emergency permits for next school year, not knowing if we're gonna need them all, but this is just a precaution.
I'll move that we adopt the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the period July 1st, 2024, 2025.
I second that.
Great, we got a one and a two. Let's start voting. Student Board Member Indiana Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
And Vice President Dolly Adams.
Still yes.
And then Michael Kuziak will say yes. Let's move on to approving our personnel report.
I'll approve the personnel report.
To have a two. And with that, let us go to trustee Raymond. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And then I will vote yes. Item 11E, review and consider adoption of the calendar of regular board meetings for 2024, 2025. I think our superintendent would like to say a little few words.
Actually, I'm gonna ask, Amy, do, is there anything special that we need to?
The only thing that's different is the, sorry.
Yeah, there was one month when.
May is the first and the third because the last week of school would be our board meeting and that would be a little crazy.
We've had a few more Tuesday meetings this past year.
Yeah, we, we have like two, I think, or maybe, actually, we have none.
Wow.
But we do have the last month is the first and third because of graduation. First and third Wednesday. Yeah.
Fantastic. With, if there's anything else to tell us about this, let's, to have a motion.
I'll move that we approve the calendar for our board meetings for 2024.
I got a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, let's vote. Student Board Member Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. It has passed. Let us now go on to the next item that I prematurely started talking about. Board member comments and reports. Let us go back to student trustee Chilton, who I hope has an update. Oh, no.
We lost by one.
Oh.
You know what? It's okay, because we already, the baseball team already got into NCS.
They did, they did so good this season.
There's more games. We had a really good season, yeah. But the boys volleyball team is actually in NCS round two and that game started at seven. I don't know what time it is.
The Trojans.
So yeah, that's tonight. But I just wanted to say, I forgot to add it on my board report, but we did also have the special ed prom this weekend. I meant to add that for the high school and that went really well. The women's club, they let us use their space for it and it was really amazing. So, yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Raymond.
My report will be short. I represented.
I represented District at Eden Area ROP in Gary's place last week, I think it was. It was, it was a great opportunity for me to hear firsthand what's going on down at ROP. And of note, there was a wonderful report about the students' performance at a competition called Skills USA, where kids from ROP all over California gather for a few days and compete in the disciplines that they're studying. And Eden Area ROP did great. Let's just put it that way. Our kids did great. There were 66 students total who went, 12 adults, the two busloads full of people represented Eden Area ROP down there. They medaled in collision repair, medical assisting, collision damage appraisal, firefighting even, in collision repair technology. It was really cool to see those results. And the kids who actually, several of those kids won gold medals statewide there, and they'll go on to compete nationally, which is really remarkable. And those kids who placed gold actually are offered full scholarships to Universal Technical Institute. So that's like full ride scholarship if they want to pursue those trades. So I just wanted to share that. It was really lovely to see that. And that's about it. I've been quite busy with family stuff and hoping to get kind of back to other things in the next couple of weeks. And I also just wanted to, I know we already talked about 1228, but I have to say, that presentation is becoming like my favorite update every year right now. Just hearing what's happening is absolutely life-affirming and beautiful, so. That's all. Thanks.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes, I was lucky to join Superintendent Partebein at the Puente Celebration on April 25th. I just have to say, it was really nice to see all the families and the kids. There was food, there was traditional dancing, there was celebrating the kids and all their accomplishments. I was really excited and honored to be there. I was there with many of you at the CVEF Spring for Education and Sports Study Session. I know nobody mentioned that, but we were all there to that. I was at Special Ed Prom with Dolly Adams, and I got to see Indiana's doppelganger, met her for the first time. There's a, there's also a girl in leadership from the side, looks like Indiana, and I almost embarrassed myself and said hello. Yeah, they look very much alike. And then Ms. Resici, I wanted to ask, are you graduating this year?
Well, not quite yet. I have one more year, but I'm close. I'm close.
Okay, just wanted to check. I know I'm actually.
We officially become Year Threes, so, but then June 2025. Ask me that question again, I'll be safe.
And I, I'm looking forward to going to your graduation. And then I have some bad news. Not bad as in like scary bad, just scheduling conflicts? I should preface that first, sorry. I need to attend for work, some community things, and some professional development during eighth grade and high school graduation. I know I wasn't there last year, so I want to make sure that I can attend Redwood, well, be able, I can't go the afternoon of the 30th, the Thursday, and I can't go Friday because I don't get out of that session until four in South City. I will want to be there for Redwood, yeah. And then I know that we have got a couple.
Can you get me a helicopter?
No, we'll let them.
You want to give me a helicopter, I will take one. I just might.
Really dramatic coming onto the field.
So I just, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry. I was given the news this week and got some things to attend for work that I cannot move around.
Everyone understands, you all have, you know, your profession, the things you have to do, and all this time you actually spend just being trustees, doing all of this work. Everyone understands.
It still doesn't take away the kill.
Thank you. Trustee Howard.
So I only did a couple of things since the last meeting. I was at Vanoy to visit the school and also to see the Spanish language immersion. And that's really terrific to see all those little kids speaking Spanish and English in their, the program's going well. And I think under the new principle, it's gonna thrive even more, which is great. And I was at the Ed Foundation Dinner that most of us were at. And once again, that was really a terrific thing. And the quote I used before was actually from Jim Fitzpatrick, our former, former superintendent, who said, "It's the most important party of the year for the school community because it gets everybody there, parents, community members, educators, and administrators, and so forth, to build those interpersonal relationships that allow us to succeed when things get tough during the year." So I think that's a great thought to keep in mind from good old Jim. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, I have six things. Some of them have already been mentioned. Alameda County School Boards Association has President Daischenalls, and I was nominated and voted in as first vice president. So there's that. Spring for Education, you know, the dinner, it is really a wonderful, fabulous dinner that everybody should try to go to if they possibly can. I like announced it at Rotary and stuff like that because those are, you know, other community men, members that are philanthropic and care about these things. I went, we all, I think all of us went to the special board meeting for sports. I learned quite a bit there. That was really good to learn. I went to Independence Open House. I hadn't been to Independent this year, so it was kind of a chance to go over there and say hi to them all. And it was really wonderful. Wish I could remember the teacher's name, but it was Room 19, was a pretty amazing room with a lot of great exhibits in it, both in math and English and writing and all of it. So I think grade three it was. AdVid brunch, I was there for the first hour because I had to go someplace else at 11:00, but I was able to speak a few words. I do think I need to work on my speech, talking or talking in front of people and be a little bit more dynamic, but you know, I went there and I did it, yeah. And I also did go to the Party for Special Ed Kids, Just Dance. And I, of course, saw Lavender there and I saw Indiana there. So, and it was packed. It was packed in the women's room there. It was, and they were having a lot of fun. Yeah.
I was able to head back to Chabot to Madagascar the Musical, was so well-executed, and it was great to see our old teachers there and just sing along. And again, I, those school communities mean so much, and you saw that community spirit at that musical. We, I also, that night, got to Spring to Education for about half the event, and it was great to be supportive of that. I'm shocked that Superintendent and trustee Howard didn't say anything about how you can rent out the adobe for your wedding. Yes, you can. I, I made it to senior night for our Castro Valley High School Trojan baseball team, and that was a lot of fun. I brought my son with me. He was a big fan of baseball. And they won eight to zero and got to meet a lot of the parents and supporters and fans there. That was so much fun to be there. And our student board member was there. Spent an evening watching our Castro Valley music students perform, the band. It's amazing to see how they progress in, in one year. I previously was with them down at Disneyland, but it's just the maturity that you see in just one year. And that group of kids has gone through a lot, and I really am so proud of what, where they've, where they find themselves at the end of this school year. I also went to the Avid Breakfast. We kind of crossed paths briefly. They didn't have coffee, so I had to run out and get coffee, but then I got there and they actually had coffee. But that's okay. Candice Tigerman is phenomenal and spoke, had something to say about each of her seniors. And I just found that so moving. You could just hear her heart speak about why she is a teacher, why she does Avid, why everyone should be in Avid, I think. And so I was really happy to see her and to be there and to talk to the students, just having some private time, just sit down and talk with students to hear about what's happening in our schools is always a wonderful thing. And then lastly, and I apologize, this was on the same day as the, as the, the event that, that Just Dance opportunity. It was a really long day. I went to Quentin, Quentin Hansen's Eagle Scout. He became an Eagle Scout. So Quentin Hansen, if you all don't remember, was our student board member. He, for his Eagle Scout project, helped create a little room off of the stage at the high school, at the Performing Arts Center, to store instruments and other equipment. Sean over at the Performing Arts Center was there. He's also an Eagle Scout. So it was really wonderful, considering how much time Quentin has spent in that space to celebrate that with Sean as well. That's all I've got. I am looking forward to meeting with you all at our next meeting in two weeks. And I know it's very, 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 very busy. This is like the, this is the time of the year where everything's like fast-forward and you realize all of our kids have grown up. And take it in and enjoy it. Have fun, everyone. So, good night. Thanks.